I apologize for my voice. Ladies and gentlemen, now that you all found seats, would you please stand and join us for the pleasure? The pleasure is to be here in the United States of America and to be a part of a police force established on the ground in this law, with liberty and justice for all. Good. Thank you all very much. This will be a seated. Welcome everybody. A very special night tonight. I'm glad you all could be here. Again, tonight, we will be installing some new officers and some of our current officers in new positions. As you all know, it's been a phenomenal time for our police department over the last couple of weeks. And again, we have the greatest police force anywhere in the nation. And that goes to how wonderful our community is. So I thank all of our police officers for everything that they do, day in and day out. With that... With that, there are a number of certain resolutions that we will be passing now. Once we get done with these resolutions, we will then have a good fortune swearing in those new officers, either as a new officer or to our new positions. So with that, Ms. Walsh, would you please proceed?
You may proceed, Your Honor. I would ask the Board to authorize the hiring of new police officer Anthony Cerusso, effective December nineteenth, two thousand and eighteen, at the contractual rate of sixty thousand four hundred and seventy-four dollars, subject to the completion of an eighteen-month probationary period.
I happily welcome that resolution. I would second it. Is there any discussion? Ms. Walsh, would you please pull the board?
Trustee Fitzgerald.
Aye.
Trustee Pombano.
Absolutely aye.
Trustee Chang.
Aye.
Trustee Chiara.
Aye.
And Mayor Longford.
Aye.
I would ask the Board to authorize the promotion of police officer Michael Bigarito to the rank of police sergeant at contractual rate of one hundred and fifty-eight thousand one hundred and forty-six dollars plus longevity, effective immediately, subject to the completion of a sixty-day probationary period.
You grab your rights and file your resolution. Is there any discussion? Ms. Walsh, would you please pull the board?
Trustee Fitzgerald.
Aye.
Trustee Pombano.
Aye.
Trustee Chang.
Aye.
Trustee Chiara.
Aye.
And Mayor Longford.
Aye.
I would ask the Board to authorize the promotion of two police sergeants, William Doherty and Thomas McCarthy, to the rank of police lieutenant, effective immediately, at the contractual rate of one hundred and seventy-eight thousand seven hundred and sixty-five dollars plus longevity, subject to the completion of a sixty-day probationary period.
I want that resolution.
And I proudly second it.
Is there any discussion on this? Ms. Walsh, would you please pull the board?
Trustee Fitzgerald.
Aye.
Trustee Pombano.
Aye.
Trustee Chang.
Aye.
Trustee Chiara.
Aye.
And Mayor Longford.
Aye.
I thank you. We will hold off on rest of that. Gentlemen, congratulations. You're ready for this, aren't you? You saw who's ready to handle it. Ladies and gentlemen, Anthony Cerusso, your new police officer. If I could ask the family of everybody to please come up and join us here. Anthony, if you could turn over to face me. I'd please state your name.
I, Anthony Cerusso.
Do solemn swear.
Do solemn swear.
To uphold the Constitution of the United States.
To uphold the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of New York.
Constitution of the State of New York.
The laws and ordinances of the Incorporated Village of Flore Park.
The laws and ordinances of the Incorporated Village of Flore Park.
And I further promise.
I further promise.
To faithfully execute.
Faithfully execute.
The duties of a police officer.
The duties of a police officer.
On the Village of Flore Park.
On the Village of Flore Park.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. This is it? Yes, ma'am. This time, I'd like to bring up Mike Bigarito. Mike, if you could come up. Mike's been with us for quite a number of years. It's been a fantastic time. Mike has proven himself a phenomenal police officer and he knows very well. He's going to the better sergeant's with us. Michael, and your family, if you could, if the whole family could come up. Big guy, can I ask you to hold something for me? You ready? Please raise your right hand. I, Michael Bigarito.
I, Michael Bigarito.
Do solemn swear.
Do solemn swear.
To uphold the Constitution of the United States.
To uphold the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of New York. The laws and ordinances of the Incorporated Village of Flore Park.
The laws and ordinances of the Incorporated Village of Flore Park.
And I further promise.
I further promise.
To faithfully execute.
Faithfully execute.
The duties of sergeant.
The duties of sergeant.
Of the Flore Park Police Department.
Of the Flore Park Police Department.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. There we go. All right. So now, what am I going to ask you to do? Okay, we'll do it this way, right? You'll help me? Okay? You got it. All right. Can you guys come here and we'll take a picture, is that okay? All right? You can stand in front of that? All right? Congratulations. Mike's on duty in about three minutes now. You know, ladies and gentlemen, we've had some great retirements. There's some wonderful people who served our community for many, many years. Some of them are here tonight. Sergeant Ron Gagnon.
Thank you.
Lieutenant Mike Suppy. Lieutenant, former Commissioner Mike Reed. I don't think I've missed anybody, to be honest. These gentlemen have served our community for many, many years and with dedicated pride for everything that they've done. We are extremely lucky because our police department, as I said before, does the state that they have, and they serve just as well. The next two gentlemen who are coming up here, I'm going to bring them up together. Because I have had the great privilege of knowing these gentlemen from, one, most of our lives, yet growing up, Tom and I, and of course, Will Doherty as well, over these many years. If you want to talk about dedication to our police department, dedication to this community, giving everything that they can possibly give, it's these two gentlemen. Every one of the other police officers who were here. We are beyond lucky, as I said before. This community is safe, we are rated number two in the state of New York, and somewhere in the top ten in the country, and it's because of what they do every single day. And we thank them for that. We look forward to having a wonderful future with the new leadership that we will have coming forward in this department. And I want to thank all of our police department on behalf of everybody in our community for everything you do every day. So to each and every one of you, thank you so much. We can't thank you enough for being there for us, for being an answer to that call and doing the things that you have to do. Many of you volunteer in our community in other things. As I look around the room, many of our policemen are also our firemen, and they're all volunteers. Think about that. Think about the time and effort that they give to our community. Think about all the different things that happen. If we're not lucky living here, I don't know where else you'd want to live. So again, I thank them for everything that they do. And with that, I know, as I said, we have a great future ahead with the two new lieutenants that we will be promoting right now. They will be working with our police commissioner day in and day out to run this department, come up with all kinds of different plans, and do the things that they have to do. They've already done that. They're already doing it now. The ingenuity, the different plans, the different things that we have seen, working together, and it's a team effort from the entire police department. These two will lead that and do it. So I thank them from the bottom of our hearts, before we even start, for everything that they're going to do and everything that they have done. And with that, if I could ask Sergeant Will Doherty and Sergeant... They must come up as soon as we're done individually, okay? Because again, I know, I think some of you have the images for these gentlemen, and I haven't either. Oh, you have? Okay. You have those. They just get to come up in a few minutes. So with that, please, raise your right hand. Repeat after me. I'd please state your name. Sorely swear. To uphold the Constitution of the United States. The Constitution of the State of New York. Laws and ordinances of the Incorporated Village of Flore Park. And I further promise. To faithfully execute. The duties of lieutenant. Of the Flore Park Police Department. To the best of my ability. So help me God. Thank you, gentlemen.
Congratulations.
Lieutenant Tom McCarthy. Oh, and this is the bear. When everybody's...
Everybody.
Gentlemen, Lieutenant Will Doherty. I could just take two more seconds just to, again, thank you all for being here for this. Again, it's a wonderful night. I want to thank the chiefs of our fire department who are here, again, for all the work that you guys do. I also want to recognize former Mayor Philip Monerius here with us. Sitting in the back very quietly is our village justice, Doug Hayman. I mean, for gentlemen, we couldn't have gotten this done with, especially going through negotiations and things like that, another longtime resident of our community, the president of our PBA, Bob Pendley. Thank you all for being here tonight. We are going to continue with our village board meeting. You don't have to stay for that. You're more than welcome to stay. But again, thank you so much, and congratulations to all of our police officers and everything else. I will offer that resolution. I will second. Any discussion? Ms. Walsh, would you please pull the board?
Trustee Fitzgerald.
Aye.
Trustee Pombano. Trustee Chang.
Aye.
Trustee Chiara.
Aye.
Mayor Longford. I would ask the Board to approve the change of dates for the January report of trustees' meetings to Wednesday, January the second, two thousand and nineteen, and Tuesday, January the fifteenth, two thousand and nineteen, at eight p.m., due to the scheduling conflict with the public hearing scheduled by the Empire State Development for the Belmont Park redevelopment project.
Second, any discussion? All is in favor? Aye. Vote.
I would ask the Board to authorize the transfer of funds in the amount of eight hundred and twelve thousand six hundred and eighteen dollars and thirty-five cents on contingent account for the payment of termination pay every time consented for the six retired police officers, appropriate as presented.
I will offer that resolution. Second, any discussion? Ms. Walsh, would you please pull the board?
Trustee Fitzgerald.
Aye.
Trustee Pombano. Trustee Chang.
Aye.
Trustee Chiara.
Aye.
And Mayor Longford.
Aye.
I would ask the Board to authorize the transfer of funds for the replacement of chairs for the full building as presented.
I will have a resolution.
Second, any discussion? Ms. Walsh, would you please pull the board?
Trustee Fitzgerald.
Aye.
Trustee Pombano. Trustee Chang.
Aye.
Trustee Chiara.
Aye.
And Mayor Longford.
Aye.
I would ask the Board to ratify the approval to hire Kelly Murphy as new police officer effective December fourth, two thousand and eighteen, at the contractual rate of forty-eight thousand three hundred and seventy-seven dollars, subject to the completion of Nassau County Police Academy, and an eighteen-month probationary period.
I will offer that resolution. I will second. Any discussion? Ms. Walsh, would you please pull the board?
Trustee Fitzgerald.
Aye.
Trustee Pombano. Trustee Chang.
Aye.
Trustee Chiara.
Aye.
And Mayor Longford.
Aye.
I would ask the Board to ratify the promotion of police officer John Wilson to the rank of sergeant effective November twentieth, two thousand and eighteen, and police officer Dean Mayo to the rank of sergeant effective December fourth, two thousand and eighteen, at the contractual rate of one hundred and fifty-eight thousand one hundred and forty-six dollars plus longevity, subject to the completion of a sixty-day probationary period.
I will offer that resolution. Second, any discussion? Ms. Walsh, would you please pull the board?
Trustee Fitzgerald.
Aye.
Trustee Pombano. Trustee Chang.
Aye.
Trustee Chiara.
Aye.
And Mayor Longford.
Aye.
I would ask the Board to determine that the intermunicipal agreement with Nassau County to reimburse the Village of Flore Park forty-eight thousand five hundred dollars for the purchase of portable radios for the Flore Park Fire Department is considered a type-two action as that term is defined in secret.
I want that resolution.
Second.
I would just like to thank our fire department and the work and the efforts of our chiefs and the fire department staff in getting these radios and working on this grant, as well as our two county legislators, Richard Lethal and me, as well, for their work and giving us, entertaining us as a grant. So I just want to say thank you. Other than that, is there any other discussion? Ms. Walsh, would you please pull the board?
Trustee Fitzgerald.
Aye.
Trustee Pombano.
Aye.
Trustee Chang.
Aye.
Trustee Chiara.
Aye.
And Mayor Longford. I would ask the Board to authorize the name to sign an intermunicipal agreement of Nassau County where Nassau County will reimburse the Village of Flore Park in the amount of forty-eight thousand five hundred dollars for the purchase of portable radios for the Flore Park Fire Department.
I will offer that resolution. No discussion? Ms. Walsh, would you please pull the board?
Trustee Fitzgerald.
Aye.
Trustee Pombano. Trustee Chang.
Aye.
Trustee Chiara.
Aye.
And Mayor Longford.
Aye.
I would ask the Board to determine that Nassau County Community Development Block Grant Funds in the total amounts of three hundred and twenty thousand dollars appropriated for handicapped accessibility at the library and Village Hall is considered a type-two action as that term is defined in secret.
I will offer that resolution. Second, any discussion? Ms. Walsh, would you please pull the board?
Trustee Fitzgerald.
Aye.
Trustee Pombano. Trustee Chang.
Aye.
Trustee Chiara.
Aye.
And Mayor Longford.
Aye.
I would ask the Board to authorize the name to sign the Community Development Block Grant Subrecipient Agreement of Nassau County where in the Village was awarded one hundred and sixty thousand dollars for handicapped accessibility improvements at Village Hall and one hundred and sixty thousand dollars for handicapped accessibility improvements at the library, commenced in September first, two thousand and eighteen.
I will offer that resolution.
Second, I just want to take this opportunity to thank our board to work, Susan Walsh, for all of her work on these community development block grants, year after year. So Susan, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Any other discussion on this? Ms. Walsh, would you please pull the board?
Trustee Fitzgerald.
Aye.
Trustee Pombano.
Aye.
Trustee Chang.
Aye.
Trustee Chiara.
Aye.
And Mayor Longford.
Aye.
I would ask the Board to adopt the sexual harassment policy as per the requirements of New York State.
I will offer that resolution. I'll second. Any discussion? Ms. Walsh, would you please pull the board?
Trustee Fitzgerald.
Aye.
Trustee Pombano. Trustee Chang.
Aye.
Trustee Chiara.
Aye.
And Mayor Longford. I would ask the Board to approve the request of village clerk to carry over eight unused vacation days, village administrator to carry over fifteen unused vacation days, and deputy treasurer to carry over five unused vacation days into the calendar year two thousand and nineteen, provided all used within the first quarter.
I will offer that resolution.
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Walsh, would you please pull the board?
Trustee Fitzgerald.
Aye.
Trustee Pombano.
Aye.
Trustee Chang.
Aye.
Trustee Chiara.
Aye.
And Mayor Longford.
Aye.
I would ask the Board to approve the request of the Flore Park Fire Department to offer crucial through the village physician as per his proposal.
So moved.
Second, any discussion? All is in favor? Aye. Vote. This carries.
I would ask the Board to authorize the public works building department staff to carry over unused vacation days to the calendar year two thousand and nineteen, provided all used within the first quarter, as follows. Steven Swinski, seven days Lucille, Twain Bone, three days Kevin Nane, Two, and Sal Fadletta, five days.
I will offer that resolution. I'll second. Any discussion? Ms. Walsh, would you please pull the board?
Trustee Fitzgerald.
Aye.
Trustee Pombano.
Aye.
Trustee Chang.
Aye.
Trustee Chiara.
Aye.
And Mayor Longford. I would ask the Board to authorize the hiring of Joseph Campanaro as a full-time laborer in the Public Works Department at contractual rate of thirty-three thousand seven hundred and sixty-seven dollars, subject to pre-employment medical, drug, and alcohol screening and approval by the Nassau County Civil Service Commission.
I will offer that resolution.
Second, any discussion? Ms. Walsh, would you please pull the board?
Trustee Fitzgerald.
Aye.
Trustee Pombano.
Aye.
Trustee Chang.
Aye.
Trustee Chiara.
Aye.
And Mayor Longford.
Aye.
Okay, with that, we're going to move to board reports, and I'm going to start with Dr. Monroe.
I'm happy to report on our Flore Park Fire Department first, and would also like to welcome and acknowledge our chief of department, David Michael, who's standing in the back, our first assistant chief, Sal Rigo, and our ex-chief, Michael Longford. Thank you, gentlemen, for your extraordinary service and dedication to our village. The Flore Park, the Flore Park Fire Department remains very concerned about the scope of the proposed redevelopment of Belmont Park, which, as now planned, will worsen traffic congestion on our main thoroughfares and jeopardize quick emergency response times. Ex-chief Michael Longford, who is here tonight, is the fire department liaison to the Village of Belmont Task Force. All will continue to monitor the redevelopment planning and prepare set statements for the January public hearing. set statements for the January public hearings about the serious negative impact this redevelopment plan will have on our local fire and emergency services, especially with concurrent issues arising from the mound where we could track construction. But for today, our fire department wishes all our families, schools, houses, and worshiping businesses a joyous, peaceful, and safe holiday season. And I'd just like to conclude by thanking all of Royal Park for making this such a beautiful holiday season in our village. Our neighborhoods will be sparked and shined with bright lights, colorful decorations, and festive displays. It's a magical time of year to be here, especially for our children. So may the holiday season bring us all joy and peace.
Thank you very much. Trustee Chang.
Just a quick update on the third track. We were given a tighter timeline. As you know, work has started on South Tyson Viaduct. They expect that work to continue until July next year. In February, retaining walls will start. That's going to take 11 months, and that'll be the same time that the Linden Avenue Tunnel is rebuilt. The elevators are going to start February 2019. Also, at the station, excuse me, and that completion date is late in 2019. COVID Avenue, you can expect a complete shutdown north of Stewart to start in March of 2019. We are still studying the traffic plans that the contract has not proposed, and we have our engineers looking at that right now, and we will be getting back to everybody at a later date. And probably be a public session on that because we have questions of how the residents would feel about some of the ideas that the board has in reference to traffic as it has its course. And finally, in fall of 2019, Plainfield Avenue Underpass work will begin, and that will take approximately eight months. So I see this schedule, they might be out of here within a year and a half. That's all. That's what I asked. Everybody, please advise libraries close Christmas Eve. I wish everybody a happy holidays, Merry Christmas, and a Happy New Year. Our next meeting will be January 2, 3rd.
I would direct, and I'd just like to let everybody know, recreation tree lighting will take place this Friday at 7:00 p.m. The gates will open up, free skating, cookies on chocolate, and a visit from our main guest Santa. This event will be rain or shine. If it does rain, we'll go into the pool building. The tree lighting will take place around 7:30 p.m. All welcome to attend. And I would just like to take this opportunity to wish all a happy holidays, a very Merry Christmas, and may the New Year bring us all health and happiness throughout the year.
Thank you, sir, very much. For the next reports, Deputy Mayor Kevin Fitzgerald will talk briefly about what is going on at Belmont Race Track and the help we need from all of our residents. So with that, for the past year and a half, the village board along with the Belmont Task Force has been meticulously following what is now officially called the Belmont Park Redevelopment Civic and Land Use Improvement Project. At the onset of the project, an arena, although it would not have been our first choice of what we would like to see there, seemed to potentially be something that may work based on the original project outlines. Over the past year, the meetings with the ESD and New York City Partners, the project has now grown in scope to a point that the concerns and impacts to our village are a grave concern. To that end, we are asking for all concerned residents for assistance in the coming months. We would like you to either send in written comments, or more importantly, and probably more impactfully, please attend and express your concerns at one of the upcoming public hearings. As there are many concerns and issues, the Belmont Task Force is planning an information session to be held on Thursday, January 3, 7:30 p.m. right here in Village Hall. Lastly, I would like to thank our four civic associations for issuing their statement of shared concerns as well. Ladies and gentlemen, this is absolutely going to be a village-wide effort to make sure that our concerns that we have been expressing since day one are out there at this last chance that we have with the DEIS in play here. With that, I'm going to turn it over to the head of our Belmont Task Force and the gentleman who are being stood in line with that group of volunteers who have been giving up a lot of their time to make sure that this information gets out, as well as their talents in using them to everything that they can do. And that's Deputy Mayor Kevin Fitzgerald.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Last week, building administrator Amber Westen, Vice President Kevin Flood, and I attended the ESD board meeting. Prior to the ESD board approving the release of the DEIS, we had the opportunity to address the board. Amongst the comments that we mentioned were the incremental scope, or as we call it, scope creep of the project, how the overall project does not fit into the character of our suburban neighborhood, along with the proximity of the now-to-be-used parking lots for close to our homes and schools. I also asked the ESD board members to attend the public hearings in person so that they would be able to hear and see the passion and concern of our residents that have for Fort Park. And so just potentially just reading the comments that submitted. Kevin Flood's closing comments that they were especially poignant with regards to how special the community Fort Park is. As it is imperative, or we feel is imperative, all residents educate themselves on this project, and it impacts some of the topics that we will be covering. January 3 information session will be transportation, which the ESD did recognize are significant challenges with regards to traffic, infrastructure issues, parking lot impact, which includes North Lot, which is the lot that is attached to Fort Park, Bella School, and Homes, along with the now recently included East Lot, which is the infield of the practice track. Also, we'll be discussing the impact of the mall, safety and security, and generally the impact this could have on our village lives. Additionally, I would urge all our residents to review the DAS, which can be found on the village website, and form a detailed comments, which they can express by attending one of the three public hearings that will be held at the Belmont Library on Tuesday, January 8, Wednesday, January 9, and Thursday, January 10. Or if you're unable to attend, comments can be submitted in writing by February 11, 2018. Details on how to submit those comments in writing can be found on the ESD's website. The village will be submitting substantial comments, not only as a public hearing, but in writing. Additionally, as we previously mentioned, we apply N V five, an engineering firm, to perform a professional review of the traffic impacts that are reported in the DAS. Additionally, we continue to retain environmental law firm, beverage environment. Thank you very much, and wish everyone happy holidays, Merry Christmas, and a Happy New Year. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. And again, ladies and gentlemen, this is something that's going to impact every single one of us, whether you live on the North End or you live on right next to Belmont Race Track. We need everybody to participate. Now, this village always comes together when we have issues that address us from the outside as well as the end. So we're asking for all of your help over the next coming weeks. If you have something you want to be discussed at these hearings and don't want to discuss it yourself, please get that to us. You have the opportunity to put it in in writing. You have the opportunity for us to bring it up in person, or someone to bring it up in person as we are there. But the impact of your concerns is very important to the ESD, and we need your help. So thank you all very much. With that, again, on behalf of my family, on behalf of the entire village board, we wish you all the best for a very, very Merry Christmas, a very, very Happy New Year. Please enjoy, stay healthy, and enjoy your families during this time. With that, I will ask for a motion to close our meeting, and then we will open it up to the public for comments. Okay?
Go.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It is carried. With that, I would ask if there's any questions or comments or issues to be raised by our residents. Mr. Piper?
Yeah, Paul. Two questions. First of all, that track for $812,000, is that a one-time deal, or is this going to run many years because of many, well, penalties and that there?
Okay.
Oh, that's a very good question. The second question is, and I should put this up on the table. Right now, on all few towers, the railroad only runs on the west, the east, the eastbound track, and we have no way to have access at all to the station right now, only on our shelf when they put the two tracks back in service again. Is there any way of a dancing next to the door? Otherwise, anyone who's got a handicap situation has those two man and they get on the train.
Yeah, it is the schedule that they've given us. I don't want to do it.
It's too bad. Really, a guy like my age, you know, we can't get up those stairs anymore.
Secret Roger bicycle, discuss, Chris.
But the second question, in fact, how, how, because why have to do it with the police and law?
Yes.
Is this going to go on forever?
This part, this part is all, covers all of that. There are, there is another part that will go over several years with each one of them in regards to their recruit time.
Is it going to be $812,000?
No, it's going to, no, we're not.
Does it decline as the years go on?
It's actually going to be much less.
Would it have been easier?
And a lot of payments.
Would it have been easier to get a bond out and pay them all up at once?
No, we had actually been putting money away for this purpose during, during negotiations and all of the years that we actually didn't have a contract.
So we had a Christmas club.
So, Mr. Peter, it's a Christmas club, yes, so.
All right.
We actually have been putting money aside for it, so. Thank you.
This is regarding a playground formerly known as Tiny Town, a new playground for the children. Who would oppose such a thing? Stratus Scolodis, S K O U L O U D I S.
Can you read this, sir?
Huh? Oh, 56 Fuller Avenue, directly adjacent to Tiny Town. A new playground for the children. Who would oppose such a thing? Well, a new playground is a great idea, but not at the cost of the neighbors and the neighborhood in which it surrounds. One of the things that attracted me to residents which I reside is the lovely tree-lined playground where my kids used to play when they were small. Well, now, gone are all the trees, replaced by giant synthetic umbrellas and tall steel structures, where birds I view into my kids' bedroom and my bedroom. And all we were given is a 69 and 3/4-inch vinyl fence. We were given no notice of such construction. They told us they had plans, and we were given notice. This is what, may I present this? This is what we were given, which doesn't depict the homes, the surrounding homes and backyards of any of the neighbors. Also, what hasn't been addressed is security for this new huge playground, parking, noise, and anything else. And like I said, we were given no prior notification of what was coming up. Here is a picture of my backyard and the fence, a new view from my patio, and this is out my bedroom window. So I asked the village trustees what their plans or intention are. We have the right to some measure of privacy in our own backyards.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. I will say this to you. A couple of things that I want to correct in your statement.
Yes.
First of all, it's my understanding that many, a number of our staff has met with you. Is that right? During those meetings, we've offered to plant higher bushes and help defray that view that you plan to have from those rooms.
All right.
Which the pictures somewhat depict. I take exception to the fact, and I'm going to be very frank.
Okay.
Non-exception.
Yes.
To the fact that this was something that was done in a vacuum, and you had no notice. February 27 of this year.
Yes.
We had a public hearing here.
All right.
To discuss those things.
No, we didn't have it.
Maybe. It was in the paper notices we're given.
Notices we're given are groundbreaking, and in the plans, there's a lot of little house that it depicts.
May I mention, notices we're given, in many occasions, these plans in this park and the discussion on Tiny Town has been going on for a very long time. It has been in newsday at least, at least three times that I know of.
Okay.
Okay? The fact that this has been built with, and I don't want anybody in any way, shape, or form to think that we don't want anybody to be able to live in their houses comfortably. We do want that. When we originally started these plans, we're going back several years at this point. Our recreation committee has been talking about doing this. Those meetings have been open to anybody who wanted to go. The plans have been either on our website, in Village Hall, in the park, in the library, and quite a number of other places.
And I've seen all of them.
And at the last minute, we're almost done with construction.
Correct, but it's time to make a correction.
We've offered to, again, plant higher bushes and things like that to help defray some of the issues you have.
That's not going to affect 300 screaming.
But Tiny Town has been there for many, many years.
I'm not arguing. It was always there, but not at the scope, size, and scale as it is now.
Well, I, actually, it pretty much is.
I have satellite photos of last year. I can show you what was there before.
With the addition of a couple of swings.
No, not the addition of, there was exactly three swings before.
I have been living there 13.
There's not 12 swings in front of my house.
But I will tell you that it comes, I gotta be honest, it comes really upsetting to us because we've worked hard to make sure that everybody, and the notices that went out letters went to your houses, as well as all of these plans have been out there from once on end.
Well, I lived directly in the store. I never had a notice to my house.
And now we want to help you.
Excuse me, I took the mail. I didn't get it.
And I didn't either, and neither did the other neighbors I spoke to.
So this letter that I have in front of me, you didn't, you didn't receive it?
No. No, I didn't receive it. Uh-huh.
Okay. At this point, I will tell you, we are looking at putting higher bushes and moving and doing some things to make sure that you have a little bit more of a better quality of life next to the park. The park, I can tell you, is not coming down. It's almost finished. We are hoping to open it in the next couple of weeks. And again, we have been at this for quite some time with all kinds of information, all kinds of public hearings.
Well, I saw the model in the pool building, and in the model.
Did you at that time say?
But no, how is I, nowhere does it depict the surrounding homes, the surrounding backyards. All you see in the model is the playground. That's very deceiving.
Okay. I, I, I'm not going to.
Look in the picture. All you see is the playground. You do not see the surrounding homes, the proximity of the surrounding.
The only reason to tell you this is I wish it had come to us sooner.
Well, how was that not used?
Buying this and doing this and suggesting that you might have had an issue. The fact that it's already done, the fact that it's already there, the fact that we want to help mitigate it by putting in bushes and things like that is, is.
Well, let me ask you one question. You don't have to be a civil engineer or architect. If I could reach my hand out my bedroom window and touch the children, I think the playground is too close.
Okay.
I can literally stick my hand out the window and touch the children.
Okay.
I think that's a little bit too close with no shows in. I don't think you know. Well, I, I think you're wrong.
We already added, we already added some additional bushes there. We repositioned the trees.
There was beautiful oak elm trees, a couple of shrubs. It's not going to take the place of trees that were there for 100 years. And it's not going to benefit the sound of, what is the maximum capacity of this playground? Do you have, do you know that? The fire department says that you have to have maximum capacity in any public space. What is maximum capacity?
I don't know.
You don't know. Exactly. You don't know. Who's going to be securing this playground?
The chief, the chief of the fire department.
Nobody knows.
I may ask him a simple question, chief.
How do we know for sure? Is anybody going to be checking?
Can I, first, I'm trying to answer your question. If you don't want the answer, that's fine with me.
Fine.
Chief, are there requirements on exterior capacities in an open space?
No. Some of the yes passes will be checked, as they always. No, they were never checked. I lived there for 12 years. I never saw anybody checking the doors.
We're wrong. I can't tell you anything.
Well, I'm just telling you a fact.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. How tall was the playground before? How tall was the structure before?
I couldn't say.
You couldn't say?
It was a wall line. That's all I can tell you.
Well, how would you like it if somebody was standing on the structure looking into your daughter's bedroom window?
So again, we're trying to mitigate that by putting in plants and, and do things to make sure that that doesn't happen.
Yeah, well, I'm glad to see what you're coming up with.
We haven't said that we aren't trying that.
My name is Martha Cohen. And I am at one oh nine Terrace Avenue. The back corner of my property enjoys Tiny Town. We're not trying to look anymore. We did not get proper notice to have input into Tiny Town. We may. Months ago, when I found out what was happening, I sent an email requesting that the neighbors adjoining the park be included in the plan. I sent that on the village website and I never heard back. The next thing I heard about it was months and months later, when we got the notice that construction was starting in a week and if we wanted to see the plans, to come to the pool building and see it. I questioned my other neighbors. They did not receive notice. So we're very upset about not being included in something that is affecting our lives so regularly. I received notices about the third track. I attended town hall meetings. I already received two emails about the Belmont development. I've already been involved in community meetings about it. And if you think I got a notice about something that was happening in my own backyard and didn't attend and have input, then you are sadly mistaken. We did not get notice. I'm very upset about this. We really. I'm also told that no environmental impact studies were done and we had no opportunity to view any impact studies that were done. We really object to the timing of this during the holidays. My other neighbors, who are also very upset, would have been here, but they're busy with their little children and with the holidays. And I think people counted on that with the timing of this destruction. That's when things are done. We want to avoid scrutiny. When we all moved in, and I bought the house in nineteen eighty-eight, there were beautiful trees between us and a small play area. This is a play area that our children enjoy. And now the mature trees are gone and we are forced to pay for and without our input in planning, a very different play area that has negatively impacted our privacy, our home values, and our peace of mind. I don't think anyone here would have allowed this to happen in their own backyards. If you search your soul, you will know that's true. There's a decrease in our home values due to this extreme lack of privacy. Hundreds of people looking down into our yards and into our windows. Right now, I speak to the workmen who stand on the platforms. The platforms are above the fence that was put up, so they're standing over the fence, looking down, talking to me like I'm talking to you here. I don't even need a microphone. I can hear them. I have some pictures. Now, this one was after one of the trees went down, but I had a privacy in my backyard. It's my daughter. This takes out a picture that what was there, they were much smaller play structures and our kids enjoyed them. They weren't towering over our houses. This is my backyard now. These hideous umbrellas. There's somebody standing on a platform. You can imagine what that's going to be when they're looking over. This is out my dining room window, so people on the platforms can see into my house. From my kitchen, I can see them. There's more umbrellas that have gone up since this one was taken, and they're nearly as tall as our houses. I'm not a public speaker, but I'm just reiterating some points that I made in an article that's going to be in the Gateway tomorrow. The fences need to be at least six foot taller than the platform that people are standing on. And you can see from those pictures, they are not. I don't think anyone there would enjoy the increase in noise. Tiny Town did not have nearly as much equipment and was not as large. And I speak to people that are involved in the parks department at New High Park who have experience with this, and structures of this size tend to draw a much older population. The umbrellas, they fade with time and they rip. They are an eyesore. With the fences put up, it does need to include noise dampening qualities. We don't know what the capacity of this new park is, and it is certainly not the park that it was. These multiple unsightly umbrellas that are nearly as tall as our homes do not weather well. And this is Floral Park. This is a town that was built under the proliferation of clouds and trees. These umbrellas do not fit the spirit of our town and they need to be removed. You can. Imagine if you're looking for a home and you want to purchase a home and you come to what my house used to be and there's a beautiful backyard with trees and now you come and you see these huge unsightly umbrellas. It's not even Floral Park. And there were no trees and there were people looking over our fences into our yards and into our windows. We are concerned that there were no environmental impact studies done, and we had no opportunity to view any studies that were done. We do want access to any studies that were done. We want to know about the codes and restrictions that are involved in this build. None of us would have been allowed anything of such height and magnitude, and rightfully so. So we want to see the codes and restrictions. I don't believe that this is right. We're concerned about the grade and flooding on Terrace Avenue. Tiny Town drains into our backyards. In the nineteen fifties, the homes there flooded very badly, and that's when the drainage system was put in. It is barely now adequate. When there are.
Excuse me, the project addresses the drain that's coming.
Yes, I'll get to that, too. They're barely adequate now when it rains hard and when there's a snow melt. And I did speak to Jeremy, who explained to me about the wells that were dug and that the surface that you're putting on the playground, which is not unnatural, and I really have concerns about kids' safety because there've been studies about that, the grasses and things that have been put down on the football fields. But he says it is porous and then will drain into these wells. But we need to monitor that because we're on the edge now, and this is a change that could negatively impact all. And as Stratus said, we are concerned about the parking impact. Obviously, this is a much bigger park than was there before. Our streets are already impacted by parking from the track, uh, from the park. And we are concerned about security, as my friends in the park system in New High Park have said, that these structures do draw an older and more numerous visitors to Tiny Town. I'm sorry, I didn't quite say that the way I wanted to. But anyway. We know that there were problems in Missy Field recently, and they had to remove play structures. So we want to make sure that there is security and that this is wanted. Mostly, we want privacy. We want homes that are marketable. We want to protect our children's inheritance. And I just think that much needs to be done to renew my faith in this town that I've always loved. I'm sorry that Linda could not be here. I know she's very concerned. Her house joins the tennis courts and she's, the town had always provided a can ruin fence for her, but only one side was done and the other side is not done. Also, Joe and Phyllis were not able to be here. He fought hard to get a higher fence for himself, and now he is very upset that now the play structures and the platforms are above the fence that he was finally allowed to build. That's not adequate now.
Thank you, Mrs. Cohen.
Thank you.
Again, we are looking at what we can to mitigate with, and I would tell you, in regard to studies that were done for, for environment, this was deemed as, as an action that didn't require those, didn't require any environmental studies. So, again, I would tell you that. And in regards to safety, I would absolutely tell you that safety is always a concern for us up at the park. It, it's a major concern for us. We have all kinds of provisions in place and they are followed. So, safety will be, will be paramount still with the new block. So, I would tell you that.
I think impact studies were necessary because the size and scope of this park is much bigger than the one that was there. So, I'm sorry. It's just like the impact studies that we have for the Belmont development now. It, it's like it includes traffic and parking and this hasn't been addressed.
We basically rebuilt a park that was there.
No, no.
Somebody he used to move stuff.
I've lived there forever.
Footprint of, the square foot area isn't there.
And it's like a lot of furniture. It's like a lot of furniture that's too big for the building and now it needs to be returned or something needs to be done. It's much, much bigger than it was. My kids played there. I was there all the time. We have the satellite view from a year ago. It is much, much bigger.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks, Linda.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Lord of Trustees. My name is Mike McDonald. I am an attorney and I own the property of fifty-six Fuller Avenue. I've owned it since nineteen seventy-seven. This is actually a good event to happen now. As a descendant of a New York City policeman, I was proud of Floral Park owner, seeing the projects as major of the village. And it's proud to see how all of these individual men who we celebrate tonight have risen to the ranks. That's what makes Floral Park different. That's why I bought here in nineteen seventy-seven. Unfortunately, we have a problem. Over the course of those forty years, I was proud to see all of the changes that happened in the park. I bought that property because of its proximity to a wonderful family environment. I was there when all of the additions have made, the improvements to the pool, the fields, the tennis courts. I was encouraged to see the investment made by the village to improve the overall life of the broader community. But in each of those cases, I received direct notice from the village as to what actions would be taken, different with the Tiny Town renovations to bear. I'm fully familiar with the municipal law of the state of New York and the notice provisions therein. I am aware of publication and other opportunities to apply. But in no time would I have given the courtesy that had been extended to me over forty years to say, Mr. McDonald, this is what we're planning. Is there any input that you might have? And it wasn't until the adjacent landlords notified me weeks ago that I became aware of that. Now, obviously, you spared no expense in renovating this park. It's appropriate that you spend that money because there will be more people looking at the village of Floral Park with the third rail and with Belmont and with Amazon and Google just down the street. Floral Park will be a major magnet for all of those individuals. So a nice new park is appropriate. The size of the park, the proximity of the park to our properties, however, raise issues of constructive eviction and in taking of property would mean a decline in value. These are ridiculous type of issues. One of the problems, though, comes down to the factual issues that we heard reported. There are few adjoining landlords who, as describing their typical, is not just with the process, we're all familiar with the process. I'm sure you did it correctly, but the notification was insufficient, even though they might have been New York, at the landowner, I received nothing in contrast to what's happened over forty years. It is no small irony that as we began the end of the session tonight, we talked about third track in Belmont. You were quite specific, Trustee Fitzgerald, about the impact of Belmont on the village. Is there not an analogy between the impact of Belmont on the village of Floral Park and the impact of Tiny Town on the adjacent landlords? Are we not concerned about the same kind of issues of quality of life, protection of privacy, of the opportunity to live in quiet enjoyment without having the impact of an enormous type of project next to you? This is, this is the energy and the injury that the adjacent landlords feel. And so, before any type of litigation or other type of contentious issues start, I hope that you will see the analogy between Belmont and Floral Park and Tiny Town and these landlords, and please direct your counsel to talk to me so we can resolve this in quick and expeditious. I am happy to do that as a longtime and continued longtime owner in Floral Park and look forward to a resolution of this issue.
Should I call you at your law office or?
I, I'm sorry, I didn't.
I'm John Ryan, the attorney. Should I call you at your law office or?
As I gave.
At fifty-six Fuller.
I gave, here you are.
You live at fifty-six Fuller?
I am the owner of fifty-six Fuller.
You don't live there?
No, I have a tenant who was just tested by, who stood before you.
Okay.
And as you, sure you undoubtedly heard, Counselor, claimed that he was the tenant. Okay?
I will be in the call tomorrow.
Thank you. And I'm happy to see that the analogy between Tiny Town and the adjacent landlords and Belmont and the village of Floral Park will make the same impact on you as it has been on the constituents of Tiny Town. Thank you very much. Merry Christmas, happy holidays, and congratulations to all you for the fabulous police.
Thank you, Mr. McDonald.
Hi, how are you? Melissa Zaco, I'm at one sixty Village Street. I'm speaking on behalf of the Floral Park Memorial BTSI. I just left the actual quarterback meeting where I'm going to ask them about the safety concern we're having over at the high school to pick up and drop off. A few weeks ago, a student was hit by a car at one of those intersections. I know since then, the principal has sent a letter out that has completed, there has been police presence at the school, but it's still very congested. It still is a big safety concern, especially just, just, really that pickup and drop off time. It's really twenty, twenty-five minute time in the morning and the afternoon. But I learned from the BOE meeting, they said it was really more of a village concern that we need to come to you to ask you for crossing guards because it's a budget concern that way. So, we have the BTSI, just wanted to bring that concern to you and see if there's possibility of getting actual crossing guards or someone to stand in those intersections. There is a police car there to hopefully kind of deter cars, I would think, to slow down and be more cautious. But at that time, it was two minutes before school. It's still very congested, especially at middle, middle place. There's cars going left, going right, going straight, kids crossing. There's no one in those crosswalks to help direct the kids and be sure that they're crossing safely. So if it's possible to get crossing guards over there or if there's another solution to ease that.
What I will tell you is we will have, we will take a serious look at it, okay?
Thanks.
Definitely. Thank you, Melissa.
Okay, this is the legal definition of bribery. Bribery referred to the offering, giving, soliciting, or receiving of an item of value as a means of influencing the actions of an individual holding a puppet for legal duty. Solicitation of a bribe also constitutes a crime and is completed regardless of whether the solicitation results in the receipt of a valuable gift. On December fifteenth, Newsday published an article stating that evidence was entered at the federal trial of James Brand and Jeremy Reisberg. This evidence is of text messages between Jonah Reichman and Commissioner Rick Alister. I'm not going to go into details because this has all become truly exhausting. For over a year now, I implore you, a public servant, our elected officials, to take appropriate action and outline the municipal law when an employee of the village of Floral Park is alleged to engage in misconduct. For over a year, you have given assignments and taken no action. We all know that when employees of the village have purportedly engaged in misconduct of harmless negligence, immediately, immediate disciplinary actions have taken place while the investigation has completed. Now, the public is provided with concrete evidence by federal prosecutors of what appears to be bribery, and I would like to know what you're going to do. No action on your part will indicate local disregarded evidence submitted under oath by federal prosecutor. What will you say about the village board's integrity? Have residents trust any decisions made by the board when we can't even trust them to properly address alleged misconduct? Your actions thus far have embarrassed our village. Your complicit stance has degraded the authority of the police department. You have brought into question your own credibility. We want you homeowners and businesses to come, live, work, and enjoy Floral Park, but the conclusion that we have a potential corrupt police commissioner and a treasurable board is damaging. So I would like to know what you're going to do.
And you for your comments.
Complicit it is, bad. Thank you. That's it.
Matthew Sexton, zero one, Medina Avenue. I also read the Newsday this week. I don't think I heard the word robbery in there at all. This whole entire thing reminds me of something that happened after March seventeen seventy. March seventeen seventy was the Boston Massacre. Six colonists were shot by Red Coat troops. Six colonists were shot by Red Coat troops. At the time, a gentleman by the name of Paul Rodear Roman, and Paul Rodear is ridiculous, he is a great American, drew a picture of this event depicting what happened. John Hancock, some of us, we always think is a great American, took this and used this as fodder to wild communist in 1770. Fortunately for the United States of America, a man by the name of John Adams, a son of liberty, a revolutionist, not only looked at this, but said it's important to be principled and follow the process. He took a tough stance, a stance so tough that he's offended. The English military, military men were accused of this crime. It was an unpopular stance, so unpopular, the odds are it may have one day not been as important to our history as it was. There's another name I want to mention, it's a name that nobody knows. His name is Patrick Cock. He was an Irishman who came here, was a colonist, and on his deathbed, he testified the truth. The colonists had gone out. They had instigated the fight that day. They had done everything within their power to allow the redcoats to respond the way they did. Over two of the redcoats saw the charges dismissed. Two of them were found guilty of manslaughter, but John Adams went on. John Adams went on to be a part of the Constitution, be President of the United States, because he was someone who got the principle. We don't hear much of John Hancock. We don't hear much of Paul Rodear. There are John Hancocks that are missed right now. They sound great, they look great, they like to pull a few words out of an article and let the mob and the chaos ensue. But they lack the principle to allow the process to move forward. And minute leaders need to allow the process to move, and they need to lead, not allow the mob to take over. I leave you with this to quote from Mr. Rogers' book, The World According to Mr. Rogers, page 144. A high school student wrote to ask, "What was the greatest event in American history?" I can't say, however, I suspect that like so many great events, it was something very simple and very quiet, with middle and upper fanfare, such as someone forgiving someone else for a deep hurt that eventually changed the course of history. The really important great things are never center stage of life's dramas. They're always in the mazes. That's why it's so essential for us to be mindful of the humble and the deep rather than the flashy and the superficial. I ask residents, be principled, don't follow the flashy and superficial.
Thank you, Matthew, for your comments.
I'm perfectly prepared, I'm ready. If the redcoats had text messages, they would have had way for deathbed confession. I agree, the process should move, there should be a process, it should move forward. That's all that she's asking for, is to know what the process is. And sitting on a smirking man at all this time is not a respectful way to treat a resident of this town. That's just not the right way to do it. You're asking, no, 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 please. They ask, all we're asking for is, what's the process? There's, there's info coming out to news, there's text messages, there's new, there's new information, and this is gonna be the third time that she's asked now, and I haven't come up in a long time, but the third time that she's asked what the process is to look into these situations, and there's nothing. There's, thank you for your notice, and she walked back to her seat. I mean, I think she at least deserves, and her residents at least deserve to know what is happening. Is nothing happening? Is there an investigation? Is it going to be investigated? Are you not allowed to talk about it? There should be something that's...
I think we said to you before that we weren't allowed to talk about certain things. I think what I'm going to do right now is ask Mr. Ryan's police comment.
You're not gonna be no comment, you're totally corrupt.
Then that's what you said. You don't just say, "Beg for your name and smirk at her," you tell her what's going on.
In all fairness, Mr. Kroger, the comments that people are corrupt, bribery, things like that, and the accusations that were in that statement are far beyond anything anybody should have to tolerate. So in all fairness, my comment is, thank you for your comments. Because if I wanted to say that I really think, it probably would not have been a good name.
Well, that's why you're a politician. You gotta figure, figure words wisely. You say, "Thank you for your comments," or...
I'm very careful to make sure. I don't embarrass a resident the same way somebody else wants.
Thank you for your comments. We're not allowed to speak about this at this moment. At a later meeting, we can speak about it. We'll hear more.
Absolutely. Thank you for your comments.
That's what I'm saying. Thank you.
I'd like you to remember to respond. To those that want this ethics board to meet so badly, they should actually go out and lead the ethics board and the ethics law. It is not an independent body. It serves at the pleasure of the board. If you're unhappy with the way that the ethics board behaves or the way it's constructed, your direction should have been long ago, before the law was passed, when the law was instituted, and before it was voted on by the village board. Thank you.
Is there anybody else who wishes to speak? Again, thank you all for being here.